All right, good evening, everybody. The life is on to orders the May 15th, 2021. Board of Education regular meeting at 7:01. Sarah, good evening to you and your colleagues.
Mr. Breg, Mrs. Depp, here. Mrs. Flau, here. Mr. Rosado, here. Mr. Robinson, here. Mr. Plaza, here. Mr. Trubizio, here.
Thank you for having me, Sarah. Please stand before the floor.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
The mission of the Norwich District team is to inspire educational excellence in our training environment.
Okay, all right. As Ralph mentioned last meeting, our interim superintendent, Mr. Rip, we're going to try to start our meeting moving forward with a celebration of success. So if anybody has anything that they want to add or comment, this should be the time to do it. Right, and anybody from the administrative team? If anybody has anything?
I'd like to celebrate the Citywide Learning Company. They just started here this year and they have been great. They've done everything we've asked. They've been very accommodating to all the staff and ups and downs of all of the year. And, you know, looking back, I haven't seen as many missed things as there were in the past. So I think they're doing a very good job. So I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Pat. For those of you who don't know, that is Pat Rossi, our building and grounds consultant. Thank you, Pat.
I would like to celebrate at Jiles School. We've recently developed a scheduling committee and we're looking at next year's schedule and also implementing a three-year cycle with that schedule. So I'd like to celebrate the, our Jiles School staff for making that effort.
Thanks a lot. For those of you who don't know, this is Bob Yekin, he is now our interim principal at Jiles School. Thank you, John McGolden.
I think what's hard is like, I mean, just, I just want to celebrate the special education specialists and teachers throughout this year. And this entire year, they've adapted. And I know that also goes for a general education with this celebration, kind of meeting the challenges. And a great example for us today on the special education, we have a lot of IED users and we have a facilitated IED model. We're very proud of at Norwich District and found a way to adapt that and meet that within a virtual setting. So I just thought a lot of community would be pretty, pretty young in that part. So it was very proud of that.
Glad to hear. And that is David Doran. David is in charge of our special education department. Thank you, David. Moving on to our agenda. Consideration for approval of the agenda as presented in the remarks. Any discussion from the board? About the discussion, I'll ask for motion to approve the agenda as presented in the remarks. Motion, sorry. Motion may be run off second. Sarah, what's up with you?
Mr. Breg, yes. Mr. Trubizio, yes. Mr. Flau, yes. Mr. Plaza, yes. Mr. Robinson, yes. Mrs. Depp? Yes, with the reception of points D and WW. Not good. No. Yeah, this turns out.
Okay, motion carries. Recognition of visitors. I'd like to welcome everybody again who's here in person tonight and prepared. Correspondence. There is one piece of correspondence that I want to share with the board and I want to share with the room. The Board of Education met this being a non-bargaining year with the Association, the Norwich Education Association of Teachers. Subsequently, on the 16th of May, this being two days ago, we received a letter and we're going to read it to the board in here. Dear Mr. Plaza, members of the Board of Education, on behalf of the Norwich Education Association of Teachers, we'd like to thank you for meeting with us on Thursday, May 13th, 2021. We hope to follow the discussion and the time we shared to be productive for all. We are excited to the board and a shared vision of providing the best education experience for the students of our fine community. We thank you for your support. So I wanted to share that with the board. The board also felt that that night was productive and I would look forward to working with you during the course. Public participation. Lou, did you check that?
No.
There is no sign for public participation tonight. For your request, the village, excuse me, the district, since their last meeting, has not received any floor requests to report. Moving on to our administrative reports. First, I will turn over interim superintendent, Mr. Welker.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things on my report and most of what I need to talk about will be related to the agenda. And first of all, we're making new plans now for the end of the school year and in terms of teacher entry, special development. Development taking care of invitational visits. So if I bring your calendar right, I have due seconds for our graduation for our eighth grade students. Let's hope for a bright sunny day that day and the day before. So that a good week to have their ceremony the evening before and we can go on the set. Classmate for Tuesday, the fifth. In the morning, we'll have some school improvement activities for staff. In the afternoon, June 7th will be a teacher institute day for Catholic Day for day one. June 8th will be a summer school, teacher prep day. Summer school will start on June 9th and summer school ends on June 29th. And I believe we have approximately 125 students.
Thank you.
Approximately 122 students have signed up so far. So we hope to pick up a few more today. So the second thing I want to just touch on, I share this with you and I know you from the weekend. As all of you are aware, we've had some changes to mask mitigation strategies from Center for Disease Control. We're seeing now today, up today, we see tomorrow, lots and lots of companies that are saying you don't have to wear masks in schools and so on and so forth. So I just want to remind everyone that we are still under an emergency disaster declaration from the governor's office that requires us to continually wear masks. I plan to follow these guidelines until such time as the governor either modifies the guidance on mask wearing in schools or allows disaster declaration to expire. We will continue to monitor guidance from CDC, the Illinois Department of Public Health, Cook County Department of Public Health, the governor's office, state board of education, and we'll make changes as necessary and as are appropriate following that guidance. I still have concerns that failure on our part not to follow that guidance opens you up to potential liability and litigation. So we will continue to monitor that. Along with that, I think, I anticipate, because I've already had some requests, to participate in the sharing of information with parents relative to the vaccination of 12 to 15-year-olds. As you all know, this has turned into a political event and if you get direct contact from vendors asking us to participate, then I think we'll reach out to you for guidance. Right now, we did not directly ask to send those that information out. We've been asked to consider doing it, but not directly. I'm kind of splitting hairs here because I'm trying to write that middle line for as long as I can. But I want to make you aware that those requests aren't coming and it may be something that we want to help with. And then finally, today, we received notice to, we received a notice to appear in Cook County Circuit Court to respond to property tax objections covering 2011 to 2014. Sarah brought me in a very fixed act of favor. I have just a couple of minutes to look at and it looks like the objections are from the same entity. We have contacted our attorney, Scott Binsford, who has handled these objections for you in the past. The problem is, we got a notice this afternoon, Sarah, at what, around 3:45? And our appearance is Thursday at 1:30. So we will, we will manage that and keep you posted. That'll be my report.
Or any questions? What was the word?
Isn't that insurmountable taxes from that's a place like retailers that talk to it?
I don't think so. It's not a name that I recognize. Which is why I call it order utility. And that's typically where the property tax objection comes. The order utility comes with bigger businesses in the area. But I need to recognize this, Sarah. I don't know if you did or not. I'll share more information after that. I need to really sit down and look at those first. We got a link. We're one for the parents, you know, first. We'll make it. Our attorney can make it.
Any last words, Rick? Thank you. Moving on to our building, monthly reports. We'll start with Lee's School. So I'll turn over to you.
Mr. Beatty and I will be sharing some things about both buildings and both of our reports today. For example, both schools, which we had mentioned earlier, have begun working on a class list for next year and have begun our normal schedules for next year. Hopefully, we'll have those for you for the rule of schedule that are next year. Working on that. Our coordinator, Celebration at Lee, will take place on June 2nd. We're really proud of our coordinator for helping us to have a celebration with them here at Lee and here at Lee. As Mr. Breg mentioned, we have our end of the year on June 4th and on June 7th. Something I wanted to mention to you that on June 7th, we will be hosting here at Lee a retirement luncheon for Judy Rodriguez, who has been in the district for 22 years. She retired that day. We will be inviting you. If you would like to join us for the celebration here at Lee. As of this morning, 122 students registered for summer school. Later in the evening, we are asking you to, for the staff report, the staff report summer school. Kid and grand celebration of, sorry, preschoolers will have the first ever end of the year celebration on June 3rd. This is, as you recall, our first year of the London preschool. So we're going to have a celebration with them. That's going to be an outside event. So on June 3rd, hoping that the weather cooperates with us on that day as well. We'd just like all those June beginning days to be there. Do a lot of help there. And our last remote pickup day is Friday, February 21st. We're really happy that it will be our last one. June 4th, we'll be looking at the materials drop off day for elementary volunteers. Students are going to be allowed to keep their Chromebooks over the summer. However, they do sell a lot of books that they can return in. And eighth graders will be turning in their Chromebooks on June 1st as they prepare for their next year.
Michelle Walker. On June 7th, what time is it?
12:00.
Okay. So today, our fifth through eighth graders completed our I-Ready meeting assessments. So that completes for our sixth grade graders. We're done with assessment for the year. Tomorrow, our fifth graders will take their final I-Ready math assessment and then they will be done for the year as well. And then Lee will take their assessment next week to complete all of their assessments for the year. Both Lee and Giles, they have really enjoyed. And we really would like to thank the PTA for a wonderful week-long teacher appreciation celebration. They did an amazing job at both schools. A taco truck was here, doughnuts, churros, guacamole salsa chips and a bunch of snacks throughout the week. So that was much appreciated by the teachers of both Giles and Lee schools. On Friday, this Friday, May 21st, PTA is hosting a drive-in movie at Divine Savior. The movie will be Space Jam. The event is open to all Giles and Lee families. So there's a flyer that was in the Lee newsletter and also the Giles newsletter to register for the event. They, they do need a number for the, because they only have so many parking spots. Monday, May 24th, both Giles and Lee are planning their, our final fire drill of the year and this will include the fire department. On Friday, May 28th, the eighth grade dance will take place in the Giles School courtyard. PTA will be running the event. It's called Night Under the Stars and that will be from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So that'll be exciting for our eighth graders. On Tuesday, June 1st, our eighth graders will be taking their field trip, end of year field trip to main event in often states. And our fifth through seventh graders will have Field Day and that also will be sponsored by the PTA and that will be in the courtyard. And we'll also be providing a remote option for our 100% remote learners for Field Day. And Lee's Field Day will take place on May 28th and that's also by PTA as well. So we thank them for organizing that and staffing that at both buildings. On Wednesday, June 2nd, is our eighth grade graduation. And as Mr. Rip said, we're hoping for a study day on June 1st for Ridgewood's graduation and on June 2nd for our graduation. We have communicated, a letter was sent a while ago to our eighth grade families preparing everyone to be prepared for that week long. Just in case you do get rain, we will make a decision by noon that day if we need to postpone and, and change the date of the graduation. The location will be at Ridgewood High School. The gates will open at 6:15. The ceremony will begin at 7:00. Invitations have been sent out to the Board of Education as well as our faculty and staff. Families will sit in piles of eight and will be attended events. We'll have photographers on site from Bang Go, which is our photography company. Also, the ceremony will be livestreamed for any family members who are unable to attend in person as we do have an in-ticket per graduate requirement. And also, there will be, at the stage, there'll be two LED screens. And so we'll be able to post digital, enhanced digital photographs of the graduates as they're receiving their diploma. So that'll be a nice feature. Really would like to thank Ridgewood High School. They've done a great job. They've worked with us and we really appreciate our, you know, that allowing us to use their stadium for the event, which does meet the IED needs. Mrs. Busick and I will be hosting a transition Zoom meeting for our fourth graders, which will be fifth graders next year. So we're excited for that. We'll have the fifth grade staff on along with the fourth grade staff and the fourth graders. And one thing I do on another celebration, the Giles School staff gave students prepared a video to welcome our new, our new fifth graders. So we're excited to share that video with our, our new fifth graders. And then the date has not been announced. We are working on that. And finally, I just would like to announce that athletics will be taking place next school year. So we're excited for that as well. And that will be my report.
Any other questions for Mr. Beatty? Bobby, I have a question for you. Do we know, the board did receive the invitations for the June 2nd graduations. In respect to the villages of Norwich and our rights, will you send out, at least as mayor and their trustees, do we know?
So I have not sent out yet, but I do have the invitation ready, ready to go.
Yeah, if we can send out to both, both villages, that's great.
Yes. So yeah, I'll do that as well because I'm there at the federal meeting. I'll send that out with the staff as well.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll move on to our special education report. Mr. Doran.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things I just want to, I appreciate the staff being able to share with us about special education department. I think what's really awesome, I always want to come from the, the venue that a lot of things that Mr. Beatty and Mrs. Busick are going to share because they truly believe that all of our students are all of our students. A lot of their, a lot are of this success of our department also their success. And I already have to say that. I want to make sure I say that. I really appreciate that part of that. Right now, it's in the air. So we're working on transition meetings between Giles and Lee. And so they sometimes are IEDs, sometimes not. And while Giles is not, the building is not dictating the needs of a student, the student is continuing to dictate those needs. A student might need something different at Giles than they are, that they need at Lee. So we're proactively finding that. I'm really excited. I haven't had a chance to kind of share this before and I apologize for that. I shouldn't share this a while ago. We decided that we really wanted to support ETC as a district in a very strong way. So any student who qualifies for placement in our preschool learning program for DAE and ETEs, we're offering them extended school year, even if they wouldn't necessarily qualify for extended school year based solely on their IED. Had a core support to make sure we had in this space. And we really wanted to provide some support on that, on that ETC. Kind of going from a similar kind of mindset like that summer school, you know, provided a lot of support at that earlier age. We're working across the board from pre-k all the way through eighth grade to kind of do those, our each grade, our recommendations, to make sure we're supporting events we're going so that, you know, a student's current case manager is really making sure that their new case manager, you know, has those sports in place to kind of make sure they're set in for success and starting successful day one. You know, with some of that information. Lee, our amazing teacher, Stephanie Mack, has, I can take absolutely no credit for this at all, has really wanted to make sure that her students are being celebrated and planning a celebration for our students in our Lee program. And our Lee program is our self-contained program to, you know, for students and they have to be in the bond. She's doing a lot there. One thing I told you before, there was a new law like enacted in, in January, you know, affirming the parent's right to a qualified interpreter in that there were a lot of situations looking at. Well, it's really nice and structured as a district. We already ordered compliance with that. So if, and I'm, you know, I'm sure everybody, you know, I don't know if they've ever seen it, but on our website, there's already a letter saying that parents have this right to a qualified interpreter. We decided as a district that that does link only to five students with IEDs. We have decided to extend it to five or four as well to make sure that all parents are active and, and for participants in, in their meetings, which we're already doing for the most part. And on top of it, we have an IED notification conference. We've already uploaded through our board software. So we're complying with that on a technical side. Looking forward, this is the time of year where we're looking at where we want to go. You know, where, where you want to improve, right? Where, if, you know, you never, you never stay silly. You're moving forward or you're moving backwards. And we always want to be moving forward. And so we're working on kind of coaching building capacity and all of our staff to, to work on SEL needs, social emotional needs, and also our co-teaching. And we have a pretty big client going forward with that. And currently for me, on my side, I'm, I'm working on kind of like defying our, our federal budget and our IED budget to make sure that's where we have a good plan on how we can best use resources to have the most bank for budget and dynamic impact. I do want to make the board aware of something. It's not really impacting us. It's House Bill 2748. And what that really is, it's, there's a lot of questions about how much learning loss has occurred, especially to our students for perceptionalities. And so there's a lot of potential unfunded mandates on us providing recruitment services, even if we've been in person. So there, we, as a district, made a plan since day one, since Betsy DeVos came out in March, that we were going to try to meet the minute to the best of our ability. But there could still be an expectation of recruitment services. Right now, if you read House Bill 2748, it really only implies high school. But there's a lot of, because of the extension beyond the age of 22, there's a lot of kind of push and lobby to provide additional services. Kind of this year is something that needs to be moved up. And so I just want to make the board aware that that is something that is, that I'm getting fairly consistent on that there is iterations of that for this. I don't know, can we have any questions on anything?
Any questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Doran, thank you very much.
David Erma?
Our monthly staff report, Mrs.?
Yes, thank you. Just one thing I wanted to draw your attention to this month on the last day of the group section and on the report. You will notice that there are contracted services. We are going to be looking into hiring nurse OT and PT positions not on contract. We're doing a cost analysis of that right now and we'll bring you more information at a later date. Just wanted to let you know that something we're working on. Any questions about this staff report? Thank you.
Sure. So this is, I like to make the request to the board. It really came to this point. Mr. Beatty said that he's going to put together a committee of staff looking at your schedule. Bob and I have met two times at least. We probably had some more longer conversations about next year's schedule. So I have a request tonight. As we talk to staff, we look at our staff and we need ways that we can enhance for offering to Giles. Do like permission tonight to advertise for a social studies teacher, a Spanish teacher, a special education teacher and an arts teacher for next year. Cost-wise, I don't have the exact figures, but I think the cost will be smaller than what it sounds like we were adding four teachers. But really, the cost would be somewhere comparable to adding one teacher by moving some people around and, and replacing some people who are leaving that maybe were at a higher end of the salary instead of, or will replace them with people who went in and lowered, lowered salary. I won't tell you, I've let Dr. Philling speak to the long-term financials of the district, but I think it's time to begin looking at putting some things back into our curriculum and our offerings for our students. This would give Bob the maximum flexibility for next year. He does have some, you know, next steps for the second year following, for the year following next year and the year following that. So we're not coming and asking you for lots of things, I mean relatively speaking. We just think that this would be a great first step and be really beneficial for Giles to. Now, we will approve those hires when we bring a recommendation to you with, with many success to them. And we're hopeful, frankly, that they'll find candidates for each of those spots. We won't know that until we go out and, and put the vacancy notes out. And have any objections to us proceeding with the next step? Thank you.
Next on our agenda is discipline data. Mrs. Busick, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you. I am only speaking about discipline data this month because I, the discipline data is only going to leak from our previous board meeting. We had one student with a two-day in-school suspension and a, any questions? Thank you.
Happy to report nothing at all.
Right away. Thank you, Bill. Some discussion on our next agenda is our board committees. Now, I did hear back from some board members where we requested donations on board committee. So I want to go over that right now. I want to have some discussion on the board's end. I, I feel the board policy development, that's a board committee of the whole type setting. Nobody specifically as far as one, two, or three members setting, nobody specifically as far as one, two, or three members of the board that's going to be on those. Go to the grounds, Frank and Lou both reached out to me, they might be on that, so I think that's how we're going to move forward there. Communications, I have Lou right now, and Maria. Finance, Molly, is now going to be in the finance committee? Frank, you want to stay in that committee or not? Does anyone know you, you're going to get something else down from this term?
I, I don't think so, only because I can handle level five. Craig usually has his show there that, that when he gets to the board, he has to decide anyway, but the body, the background she has, good addition, but I don't necessarily need to stay on, especially if I stay with Bill and Brown for the next year.
I'm on the, I don't like staying, I, I would have an interest in another one down the list here, so, um, I don't know, if Chris, what, what your intentions are, I'm open to whatever, I mean, what committees were you majorized on?
The biggest one I got right now is the Park District, uh, I'd say help out another committee, seems to be, if there's something missing.
I, I'd stay in there for now, I mean, we can go from there.
Molly, Renzo, we have the clients, we have something changes, or you know, if something comes up, a couple of board members just left, you know, or, you know, we can address a point like that. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to a little bit here, because these would be, these would be new ones, so the education, parent teacher advisory, maybe a little bit of a rationality, maybe just a little bit of that, because I don't, all of those, we don't have those so.
Well, and, and so, thank you, uh, I list those, we tell them, um, board policy two colon one fifty, board committees, these are actually spelled out in your policy with the standing committee. So my, my, my question to you tonight is going to be, haven't had meetings with these committees, but if not, do you want to continue to include them in your list of standing committees? If you don't, will modify, uh, policy two colon one fifty. If you want to keep them in the policy, you could, uh, declare that they are ad hoc committees and will need only as needed.
So, everybody in there?
Yeah.
So, okay, so those are my questions, I think, I think, I should leave them in the policy. I think they are, they are, and I say that because those are important topics. To get to the second part of your question, have you been meeting members? No, we haven't established committees for those three, but do you think you would be ad hoc type setting? Yes, I, I would welcome that, that just wants to respond to the board as to those three specific. Is the board with that?
That's good. Have they ever met, I mean, Michelle or anyone?
Not to my memory. I don't think.
No, I was just... Yeah, okay.
And that's fine, if something comes up and the board says, you know, we're going to be a special, we need that go to an education committee that's spelled out in the policy for, uh, parent teacher advisory, that, uh, our board president could assign that issue to that committee, so I think that's fine, I just wanted to bring to you that will do the difference.
I'm going to just go back on your negotiations, I know Frank and Renzo have expressed an interest in staying on that, so that'll stay the same. North Park will be Renzo and Chris, and then IAS delegation. You know, and I spoke to some other districts, and I know those committees in other districts that don't necessarily get that, so that's our policy.
No, this one is not going to be part of it.
So that one, if, if the board does not want to have a representative in that committee, we don't have to, we can possibly.
I would, we, we get all the dialogue, Holly and Maria.
We get the emails, we get some, uh, hard copies of things too, so I'm okay with no, with no specific commitment on that. Is the board with that?
So, you taking that off of the board?
It sounds, yeah.
If we need it, we'll create an AI, maybe we will.
Yeah. Thank you. So, let me just recap it, just, um, for the table, for the minutes, the board policy development, that'll be a committee of the board type setting. Go to the grounds, we'll be Lou and Frank. Communications will be Lou and Maria. Finance will be Molly and Renzo. Negotiations will be Frank and Renzo. The education, parent teacher advisory, behavioral intervention committee, as well as the IAS delegation, will be as needed ad hoc.
I'll take, I'll take finance with these on the three, I'll take.
You feel all right with that?
Yeah.
Because you were on that committee before, so, so let me come up to that, Molly and Maria will be on here. Okay? Again, education, parent teacher advisory, behavioral intervention, and IAS will be ad hoc as needed. North Park District will be Renzo and Chris. And per board policy, being as the city board president, I can attend these meetings, I can, I can be on all of them if needed, um, and just, just to reiterate, and Ralph Kirk and Maranis, please, shout it out. If there's going to be three board members that can intervene, agenda will be posted, but it needs to be a protocol called the home books. If there's only going to be two of you, I'm not attending, it's not going to be a third, uh, it does not need to be posted. All right, glad that's squared away, uh, to our committees, to you guys. Moving on to our consent agenda, um, I'm going to ask the board to consider approval for consent agenda. If you have a decent discussion, but I just want to make note, when you look on the consent agenda, specifically under DDA and WW, WW, those are identified as consider approval of Baker twenty twenty-one special ed minutes under D, WW, language is consider the approval of the April twentieth, twenty twenty-one regular reading minutes. I just want to make note that at the time, uh, Chris and Molly were not, so just want to make note. Any other discussion? All right, I'll be asking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Those will be, are you the motion, or do you think it's a word? For second, sir, now we're going.
Mr. Fazana? Mrs. Law? Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Mr. Monsen?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes, I would stay for the WW.
Mr. Monsen?
Yes. Okay, the motion is clear, thank you. Moving on to our action items. I'd like the board to consider approval of special ed transportation contract from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion on that? All right, okay. I have a motion to approve the special ed transportation contract from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school year. The motion is made by Lou, second, and Renzo, sir. Can I have a little call please?
Mr. Fazana? Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Mr. Colasen?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck? Yes, Mr. Monsen? Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
The motion is clear. Consider approval for appointments to board committees. Quick discussion as mentioned a couple minutes ago. Any other discussion? I ask for a motion to approve appointments to set board committees. Motion made by Molly, second, and I agree. Call please.
Mrs. Beck? Yes, Mrs. Law? Yes, Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
Mr. Monsen? Mr. Colasen?
Yes.
Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Mr. Fazana?
Okay, the motion is clear. Consider the approval of quote for the purchase of thirty-six student Chromebooks. Any discussion with the board?
Is that a need replacement?
Uh, yes. That's a small one.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the quote for purchase of thirty-six student Chromebooks. Okay. Motion made by Lou, second, and Frank, Sarah, call please.
Mr. Fazana? Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
Mr. Monsen?
Yes.
Mrs. Law? Yes, Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Mr. Colasen?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is clear.
And if I may, I just want the board to know that we are talking, uh, internally about creating a rotation schedule so that we can only run behind a thousand of these in a couple of years, and we're going to start to replace some of them each year on an ongoing basis, so we don't have huge, gigantic, how many of us can replace the ones that we got back there.
Okay, next action item is consider approval of appointments of summer school and extended school year staff and budget. Any discussion?
Would this potentially change, uh, if more students come in and more teachers are really recruiting, set up that?
It could potentially change if considerable amount of students sign up, like in another project.
Yes, okay.
And we will keep you posted on that if that does happen. Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you were originally planning for around one hundred and seventy-five, correct?
Hundred and seventy-five, um, and the staff, the staffing will be at one hundred and seventy-five.
We have quite a bit of, of room here. I would just say to you that our, our plan is to pay for this summer school out of this year's budget. There is room in this year's budget to do that, and then use some of our federal stimulus money to pay for summer school for the next three years. We will allocate funds to do that. It's kind of a nice position being in.
Just kind of our shell for budgets, everyone's seventy-five, right? For students, and right now we're one twenty-two. Any questions or comments from the board? I'll ask for a motion to approve the employment of summer school and extended school year staff and budget. Say, motion made by Maria, second, and first. Sarah, call please.
Mrs. Law? Yes, Mr. Monsen?
Yes.
Mr. Ray McDonald? Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
Mr. Colasen?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes, Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is clear. Consider approval of quote for district workers' compensation insurance for the school employees' lost fund workers' compensation pool in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-four cents. Any discussion? I ask for a motion to approve the quote for district workers' compensation insurance for the school employees' lost fund workers' compensation pool in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-four cents.
Motion.
Motion made by Molly, second, and Frank, Sarah, call please.
Yes, Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
Mr. Colasen?
Yes.
Mrs. Law? Yes, Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Mr. Fazana?
Yes.
Mr. Monsen?
Yes.
And if I may, I, I want to strongly encourage you to consider, uh, going to a bidding cycle for all of your insurance packages, uh, I don't think that's been done, if I'm understanding Michelle correctly, and while I, I have some working knowledge of, of the outer, they do a great job, uh, I think there's benefit to bidding the insurance packages on a regular basis, so I would just suggest that you give that some thought, uh, probably around November or December, uh, to get the bids out in January so that you can get in the market at a good time. You might be surprised at how much you can save across all of your insurance packages are bidding.
Next action item, the agenda is to consider the approval of summer facilities projects. Any discussion? Okay, well, that's for motion to approve the summer facilities projects. Motion made by Maria, second, and first. Call please.
Mrs. Law? Yes, Mr. Monsen?
Yes.
Mr. Fazana?
Yes.
Mr. Trubutio?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Colasen?
Yes.
Mr. Verard?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is clear. Moving on to our discussion items, there's a few that you will see on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Veren if he can talk about it.
Thank you. Trey Mon, or you?
Yeah, you're up, Trey.
Uh, if he wants to, we can help with this, that's great, if you're up.
Yes, I think so.
I will just assume that, and if you're going on this item, if you're available?
Yeah. Can you hear us, Dr. Shuff? You're muted.
I'm on the, yeah, you good?
Too loud, too.
No, it's good.
You hear anything now?
Yes.
So we're talking about the budget calendar, correct? Okay, um, the proposed budget calendar for the FY twenty-two budget, um, I'm proposing that it start, um, in July twentieth, um, with financing facilities meetings, and the reason for that is that, you know, the changes, uh, interim superintendent and, um, um, the superintendent and, uh, Michelle would like to do a thirty-six look forward at curriculum and educational needs, and at the same time, I'm working with Pat and Joe on a thirty-six, and the architect on a thirty-six month, um, facilities, uh, projection, since working cash funds need to be expended within that period of time, and also if we need to use any ESSR or any other funds, we can coordinate that between the two. So those two things are going to probably come to together somewhere around July, and we'll know what our probably ended the year, and we'll also know what the big pieces of revenue are for the next year, uh, from the state, whether they're going to do anything or not. That will allow us to adopt a tentative budget in August, um, put it on display, and still hold another finance committee, uh, to review everything before it's finally adopted. And that's basically it, um, I anticipate we, uh, we have an imbalance budget this year because of COVID especially, since there are expenses that we just don't have, like we did last year, so I don't think there's anything to worry about, um, but I think it's important that we look at a thirty-six month plan, um, just basically because of, uh, you know, the state's position on revenue and so forth. Questions?
Don't stay on, we can come back to that.
Yep.
Dr. Shuff?
Yes.
There were no questions?
Okay.
Just watch the show, hopefully there, there might be some more questions than a little.
Okay.
All right, so having been under the session items, reviewing current district equalization chart, I just wanted to, to share this with you so that you know what it looks like currently and to let you know that, uh, we will be having some conversations during the future that may, uh, make some changes and some modifications to the, uh, so tonight I wanted to, this is the introduction part, uh, let you see it, let you ask any questions about it, and just to let you know that, uh, we, we plan to have some conversations that may result in some changes. Questions on that? Okay, item C is updates to board policy. So I've done some looking, uh, in the policy book, had some conversations with Sarah, and tonight in this section, I, I want to do a couple of things. First of all, uh, in terms of policy development, uh, much like what I'm asking you to do with the introduce, discuss, and act, you only do two of those in any one meeting, you shouldn't have a similar, uh, approach to policy development. And I looked in the, in the board policy book, uh, and, um, in your policy book, it talks about board policy development, but it does not prescribe a process to introduce, discuss, and act on those, on those policies, which is fine. So what I'm going to propose to you tonight is that you, uh, take a two-step approach to policy development and approval. One, you receive the policy, they're introduced, maybe a decision is made to, talking about a, a committee in the hold, uh, but the policy is approved on first reading, because that's really a formality, it basically introduces the policy to you and to our public. It basically introduces the policy to you and to our public. And then we would take whatever time is necessary for the board to review the policy, to ask questions, to perhaps change or modify the recommended policy changes by the IASG Press Policy Service. And then the idea would be you come back the next month and approve the policies on second reading and then adopt them. And then they would go into our board policy book and they would be changed online. This is a very common approach, it's basically the approach that I used during my career as a superintendent. It's a recommendation. If you're not ready to approve a policy on second reading the subsequent month, month, you can put it off. They're your policy. Now, this is just a recommendation protocol for us that will help us administratively help get you ready to approve any proposed changes to your board policy. So why do we have changes to board policy? Well, primarily, recommendations that come from the Press Policy Service are a result of a change in a current law, in an existing legislation. Or two, the introduction of new legislation that comes invariably every year at the end of the legislative season. I anticipate a huge policy update package from Press sometime in August or September as a result of this year's legislative season. I think there's going to be a significant number of new requirements, changes to existing policies that will be dealing, okay? So this will help us get those things in place in a systematic way. Now, for tonight, there are two, there are two things that I want to, assuming that that's okay. We have been given a new policy. And that policy is seven, three, four, five. It's in the student section of the policy book. And this is a new policy in route as a result of legislation that was enacted some time ago called the Student Online Privacy Protection Act, or what we call SAPA for short. SAPA has many, many requirements for school districts now to protect students and families' online data. We are working through those requirements. We are making the changes to our handbooks. We are reaching out to our vendors, and we're getting disclosure agreements from our vendors. We're identifying those people like the Googles of the world who don't want to sign our disclosure agreement and some of these kinds of things. So there's lots of things that we're working on. John Bill is doing a really good job with that. But one of the requirements is you have a policy on this new law in place by July first. And so what I would like to do tonight is introduce this, and then if we have occasion to have a special meeting in the next week or so, I would like the board to approve on first reading this policy. We would bring it back in June for second read and then adoption. And then we can put it in our policy book, and we can meet that July one timeline to have a policy in place, okay? Does that sound, okay, I included in your board book a copy of the policy. We have, we have a little bit more work to do before I bring you the final draft of what we will be proposing to you to adopt as your policy. All right, so we're going to move ahead with that. And then the second thing regarding policy work, there are approximately eleven board policy proposed changes that have come out in the last year or so that have not been finalized here in District Eight. And so Sarah has helped me identify those. I am researching those. Again, if you have a special meeting in, you know, in the next week or so, the board president, I would like to bring those to you and have you approve that on first reading, and then we will take our time and work through at the June board meeting, the second read and adopt. And then I believe with, with some help from, a lot of help from Sarah, I think, we will be up to date on all of the proposed policy changes from the School Board Association service that we use. And we'll be ready for this next onslaught of proposed policy changes that typically comes out in late August or September, maybe first October. So I want to make you aware that we are working on those things. I don't think, a couple of things, there is, there's just minor, minor changes. A couple of them are more involved, and we will, we will work through those with you in more detail when we bring them to you for first reading.
Just a quick comment, I think I see the policy here in so far from what you mentioned, and the eleven board policies that have not been finalized. The board's intent is to be fully compliant with what we need to be by the guidelines that are set by law. So if we have that a special meeting, you know, to make sure those are in place, to provide the board to be compliant as soon as possible.
So looking forward to those. And then I did want to point out, and this is new to me, doesn't mean anything except it's new to me. Over the past couple of years, I think, you have the board, not this board, but the board, had suspended two policies. I just want to point out to you that those policies are no longer suspended because the timeline that was recorded in the minutes has run out. And I will provide you more information on both the policies as well. One of them, I believe, is eight, two, zero, beginning to use the school service. And that's one of the ones that we need to look at. Okay? And I don't know if you remember all that. You don't know that that one has one line recorded in the minutes, correct? Yeah, if you, so the second one, you can't find recorded in minutes, I can't report them. And if some of you recall, I have to let you know, I'll certainly research that and bring that to you. I appreciate your comment, Mr. Blas, about keeping the board book up to date. Folks, that's one of the most, in my mind, one of your most critical functions, is to make sure that your policies are updated. Because many, many of the decisions that we make as an administrative team come directly from what you have in your policy. They guide us in our decisions. So looking forward.
Yeah, definitely forward. I want to ask you something about the use of school facility policy. We need to go back, we could go back to the other one, we could identify it also, but we need to have some more discussion on that. Because I feel I understand what the board's goal of that one is, and I don't know where we're at with the board law team on that. So we definitely need more discussion on that, and that's something the board will have to ensure.
Sure, and it's on the list, so we'll take whatever time on that that we need.
Just for the signal, a quick, I think, second policy that I want to share on is in reference to advertisement, dispensation of advertisement. And that came about when a local company was willing to paint our gymnasium and put up a promotion or put up a, thank you, sign this, both. Seventy percent sure it's a reference to that.
We also have suspended five point one two two for the elementary district. That one was suspended in March of one.
Five point one two.
Oh, this one. Sorry?
Which one?
Five point one two.
That one was not there, so thank you. Which one was that, Michelle?
That was one, when you suspended, we compared.
So we actually have three of them that are trying to finish the session.
But we'll take a look at that one, I have two of them.
Yes.
Very good. Very good thinking. All right. I have a need under discussion, replacement of future computers. Just want to let you know that we are in the process of gathering feedback from the staff on what they would like to see in terms of their own individual computer to use to help them in the classroom. A survey was sent out, we've got quite a bit of feedback from the staff on that, and we will be going through that feedback and sharing that information with John Bill and taking that back to the staff to get one more round of feedback from them. And then we may very well be coming back to you with the recommendation to purchase computers for staff. I anticipate doing that on the board. I have a need for proposed changes to the 2021, 2022 parent student handbook. On an annual basis, the parent student handbook is to be reviewed for potential changes. There are some prescriptive steps in the code that identifies who should participate in that process. What I want to tell you tonight is that we have started that process, and this may be something that if we have a special meeting in the next week or so, we may come to you if we're ready. But certainly, we want to get this taken care of by June so that we can prepare. This handbook is in connection with all of our registration materials. Very important that we have enough to take handbooks, so our students and their parents are aware of our policies and our procedures are. And my understanding is perhaps this hasn't been done recently, and so there's some work to do. Michelle and Bob are leading that committee, and I appreciate their, you doing so. Item G, are the proposed fees for 2021, 2022. Michelle lives in the combat, and so I'm going to ask her to address it.
Yes, so we got put together, Mr. Ray, I and I, with curriculum protocols, some of the fees protocols, which we are requesting fifth, fifteenth grade to be three hundred dollars for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We have cut out again for next year EE uniforms, we're going to put that on hold for right now. And we're also putting on hold the heart straps, that does require changing also for these. We put both of those things on hold for next year and to reevaluate them going forward. And then at E, we've already approved the preschool kindergarten fees. We've already started registering preschool kindergarten. But we are looking at the total fees for first through fourth grade being two hundred and fifty-five dollars. You can see a breakdown in curriculum on all of those pages in your. So it's about, I think, last year fees, that was about three twenty-five. So we've gone down twenty-five dollars, and about, about the same, a little bit less, twenty-two dollars. Mr. Spitzer, probably going to use the head products, but that still is being discussed right now. So that will bring to you at that special meeting, if there is a special meeting, because we will have to have that finalized before registration.
So again, this is information, this is the introduction part. Be happy to answer any questions tonight or going forward, but we would like to bring this document, if you'd like me to back you on the approval, no later than the June board. Item G, under discussion is the school board conference in November. This is something that I highly recommend the boards participate in. This is a three-day event that occurs downtown in Chicago. It's an excellent opportunity for board members to undergo some professional development, some learning, hear some great speakers, network with board members from all over the state. It's just a, it's just a tremendous, tremendous opportunity, I think, for those kinds of things that I've laid out for you. The reason that I bring this to you now is because the registration for this will come out the week of June eighth, it'll come out on June eighth. Typically, there's a rush to register if a board wants to secure housing downtown. Not sure that that would be necessary, but we would like to send in the registration for anyone who wishes to attend for the three-day, the three-day conference. I don't know what you've done in the past, if you've attended or participated. I just, I just think it's a tremendous opportunity for you to learn about all sorts of things, relative to boards of education, running school districts, legislation, hot topics, major, major issues of the day. It's a great opportunity, and I would certainly encourage all of you to participate. And if any of you would like to participate, please let us know, and we will submit your registration. This is a legitimate board professional development expense. There's anywhere between ten thousand, five hundred, and eleven thousand board members that usually attend this conference when it's live. It's a major event, if you, I think it's well worth the time that you can spend and go. So if you would like to do that, please let us know, and we will make those arrangements for you. Summer workers for building the grounds for the indoor work. Mr. Rossi is requesting and ready, committing a recommendation on the employment of a couple of additional summer helpers. Last month, we approved the employment of one person to help outside. My understanding is that these two buildings would be working with the crew on the inside. And so I probably didn't get this organized as quickly as I should have, but I want to make, I want to bring it to you, that is the introduction piece. We have the names, that's given us that information. So again, if we have a special meeting coming up, you may want, you may ask me to approve this. So these folks can begin on June seventh, as soon as Pat has finished his school's office. Don't want to hold him up in history, because they've got a lot on their plate. They're going to do some really key stuff for us. So just want to bring that to your attention tonight and tell you that this will be coming as well. And then finally, our last discussion item for the evening is we provide you with a big one of the STEAM lab labs at Jive. Our crew is continuing to work and making progress there. Michelle and I participated in a zoo meeting, was that last week, Michelle?
Last market.
Last week with the Northern School Foundation Board. We had a very good forty-five minute conversation with them. We clarified what they would like to provide for the lab, helped us clarify what we need to provide to the lab, fascinating help in putting that list of equipment together that we are going to purchase, which I believe Dr. Schilling had money in the budget for. We actually came in maybe just a little bit under that. And then Bob has had a meeting with the STEAM teachers that went pretty well, and we know that we have a little bit more conversation to have with them and do some planning to help them, to really make this an outstanding opportunity for our students. So just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. You're still on track with everything, correct? You're still on track with everything, correct?
Yeah, a little bit today, we're doing it.
Yeah, and I know you're doing a good job, so the equipment hasn't been ordered, it will soon be ordered, and hopefully it'll be here on time and we'll be ready to go with those two lab and school. So are there any questions on that?
Really quick question. Have we decided what we're going to do with the floors? It seemed like we have nothing around it.
I'm sorry, I think you know what you want to do with the floors?
Floors.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to, we already have some folks, we're going to do, three quarters of the floors are going to be epoxy. We thought we'd leave a good portion of the industrial arts because it's already hard to look there. Kind of like a character thing, I know that there is a, we can get, when we finish, it's like we did the gym and make it look nice and kind of be a, kind of a two-tone, I think, but we've had to be, have a little bit of character in it, so.
Also, pipe back, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Thank you.
Okay, any other board comments or questions, anybody? All right, with that, just want to thank everybody who gave reports tonight, any data that was presented, thank you for that, and your discussion points for the board to think about and think about. Thank you everyone. I'd like the board to consider a motion to adjourn a closed session to discuss the appointment, impound, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and review of closed session minutes. Any discussion? Are you concerned with that? Then ask for motion to adjourn a closed session to discuss the appointment, impound, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and review of closed session minutes.
Motion.
Motion made by Liz, second to the law. So.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Travizio?
Yes.
Mr. Verden?
Yes.
Mrs. Laa?
Yes.
Mr. Palasmo?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Okay, the motion is clear. On what the time, it's 8:13 PM. Let's take about 11, 12 minutes break, and then we will be considered in close at 8:00. Okay?
All right, board. Board of Education, at 9:40 AM, and they're now back in open session.
We can't, you know, when you take a motion next to closed session and you are back in open session, but if you want to do that second, you can. We'll do the second one tonight, and we will, we'll simplify it. So I'm going to motion to adjourn open session at 9:40 AM. Go, second to the law, right? All favors say aye. Any opposed,赞成, or opposed? Just a formal, now back to open, moving on to personnel. I'd like the board to consider the approval of summer, the summer worker for building grounds, specifically various small like trimming, edging, et cetera. Any discussion?
It was really quick, I know exactly what it was.
Adam. Yes. Adam Alford.
Alford, that's right.
Alford.
I don't know.
Do I, I never questioned him at all. This one said I can't.
Yeah, this one.
Who would this kid be recording to? Like, who would he be making sure that they weren't just?
They came out unsupervised, so that's a bunch of hard questions. Please, Joe. And actually, we're seeing a difference on the volume of performance because of the question. Joe, back down. Any questions and or discussion? The motion to approve summer worker for being G, who has small like trimming, edging, etc.
I'll make it.
Motion under second, Joe. Go, Congress.
Mr. Verden?
Yes.
Mrs. Laa?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Travizio?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Mr. Palasmo?
Yes.
Mr. Verden?
Okay, the motion is clear. Consider the approval of the reemployment of paraprofessionals. There is a little bit of discussion, I'll turn over to, in terms of retention.
So you have the list, and we have identified a name that we are asking you to not approve at this time, so I'll ask for motion be to approve the list as amended? Do we employ the paraprofessionals for next year?
We will go to that, yes. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the reemployment of paraprofessionals as now amended, considering the, Mr. Travizio, motion second. Motion under second, right. Frank, Sarah, go, Congress.
Mr. Verden?
Yes.
Mr. Travizio?
Yes.
Mr. Verden?
Yes.
Mr. Palasmo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Depp?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is clear. At this time, it is time for board reflection, as always. Please pass it to your left, Mr. Moore. All right, I'm going to ask the board for motion to adjourn at 9:41 PM. Second to the law, Frank. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed,赞成? Thank you, everyone. The meeting is now adjourned.